Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the regularly, uh, I'm sorry, the special meeting of the Board of Education, School District, and Northern Fond du Lac to order with a rule called, please.
Uh, Chisholm?
Yes.
Haldafsky? Hawk?
Sure.
Streeter?
Here.
Will?
Here.
Right.
Four oh five makes a quorum. Thank you very much. Report on public notice, please, Mr. Seadough.
Public notices and agendas have been mailed to the Fond du Lac reported radio station, KFIZ, KFIZ 10.101.7, the bowl at WFDL radio, and agendas were posted in the district office at US Bank in Municipal Building on Friday, May 5th, 2017.
Thank you, sir. Please rise for the pledge allegiance as we begin the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At every public meeting, we give the opportunity for those in the audience to address the board under a portion of the meeting we call citizens input. So I will declare the meeting open for citizens input at 7:04 PM. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the board?
Yeah.
This is unusual. Most of the time, we don't have anyone from the public that's here. Just a stat. So seeing nobody itching to make a comment, only once, I will declare the citizens input portion of the meeting closed at 7:05 PM. Thank you. Item F on the agenda. Well, thanks very much.
Concert test report.
Excellent. We have not a whole bunch, but quality, not quantity today. We have an opportunity at Work Fest right now, it's on the 22nd, ordinance meeting to celebrate our music performance, and we have a couple performers here, our state winners for solo ensemble, and this time I want to pass it over to our great vocal leader from 6th, 12th grade, Mr. Anthony Rasserson. Thanks, Mr. Seadough.
So as you can see behind you, but also announce, definitely want to congratulate the members of both the vocal side and the instrumental side, speaking for Mr. Scadella. Believe you can't make it here tonight, but we're very pleased and very honored to be in a district with not only great students, but great talent as well when it comes to their performance in the arts and in singing and instrumental wise. We had 15 events, both vocal and instrumental, qualify from district at Sacred Springs, then participate in the state music festival at University of Wisconsin, Oshkosh. Of those 15, then 13 events participated, and all three major events, large ensembles of the jazz band, flute choir, and the show choir got a chance to be into, to make it to state with a starred first rating. And of that, then, we had five events place a second at state festival, and we had eight events place first. Definitely want to congratulate Jedica Tania, both piano and flute, Megan McLeibn with her musical theater piece, Tessa Track singer with piano, Brenna Wetherbee with her flute piece, all the jazz band members should be commended for getting to state, Diego Cortez, Alexis Wagner, Gabby Docno, Sheldon Smith, Vanessa Huck, Haley Heidel, Leila Menke, Michael Zagar, Will Hin, Haley Badness, Nolan Thomas, Tessa Track singer, Megan Zagar, and Kate Wolf. And then we have to also commend Ben Franklin and Darius Hayes, which we'll be hearing here in a moment, and we'll follow that up with Brittany Nice, both her events of her classical musical theater made at state, Maria Reaper's musical theater piece made at state, and the flute choir with Anna Miramonte, Brenna Wetherbee, Ashley Beck, Cameron Semenius, Tricia Groyle, Calista Treptow, Gabby Frank, Jedica Tania as well, Lily Barker, and Maria Reaper placed a first state, and happy to announce that the show choir placed a first at state festival, Marley Friedel, Maria Reaper, Alice Sodermark, Megan McLeibn, Kira Jakes, Brittany Nice, Cal Mendleski, Cameron Semenius, Corinne Martin, Ben Franklin, Darius Hayes, Hunter Hodgson, Matt McCourt, and Nijan Stubbs. So they should be commended for their performances and for their efforts to get to state, and also not only to get to state, but to perform well at state. So that should be recognized if I can give that. Should also note, definitely thank you to Mike Reese and to Heather Fawcett for instilling that foundation at the early level at FLC and at BAM's instrumental side here, and so they start them off really well, and we get spoiled musically at high school level with Jerry and myself, so they should be commended as well. And also thank you to the fine administrative staff for the support of the arts and the continued promotion of students both onstage and outside the stage realm of theater and music. So that is good news as well. Happy to be in a great district with that, and it means a lot to us. But before we begin then with the musical announcement, we do want to have a few, but thank you for getting the drums ready, Mr. Seadough, I know you're eager. But we will have our two male gentlemen come on up, and, well, I guess, yeah, gentlemen, yep, our two male duet, and I'll have them introduce themselves and what they'll be singing, and then I'll have Brittany follow that. So come on, guys, let's.
The camera's right there, so play right in. Let's hear it for Darius and Jedica.
You could be right here.
Oh, boy. Right center.
Or you could face the board.
You could face the board.
If you do so please, but.
Or if you'd like to stand where you are there.
Oh, so if you stand over here, you think everybody can see.
You could face, yeah. And what will you be singing tonight, gentlemen?
Well, we'll be singing "Capital Ship," and it's arranged by Leonard Poncom.
And what's an interesting aspect?
The part about this song is that some of the lyrics in the company go together. For example, when we sing the word "shiver," the piano part shivers.
So listen to that. Here we go.
Love it.
All set?
Yeah. (singing) A capital ship or an ocean trip was a walloping window blind. Though with that blue just made her crew or trouble the captain's mind. The man at the wheel was made to feel condemned for the wildness blow. Though it often appeared when the gale had cleared that he bade it his long below. And though he wins high-ho, a-roading I will go. I'll stay no more on England shore, so let the music play. I'm off on a morning train, I'll cross the raging bay. I'm off to my love with a boxing glove ten thousand miles away. The captain sat on a camel horse head and dined in a royal way. Of toasted pigs and nipples and pigs and nothing regret each day. And the cook was the cheapy day, as such would a diet he gave the crew. Was a number of tons of lacrosse boncercupusure blue. And though he wins high-ho, a-roading I will go. I'll stay no more on England shore, so let the music play. I'm off on a morning train, I'll cross the raging bay. I'm off to my love with a boxing glove ten thousand miles away. When we all fell in last mariner's will on a diet that's cheap and rude. And we shivered and shook as we dipped the cook in a tub of his gruesome food. Then Uncle Pride he laid aside and beware in ashore. On the gullaby house where the boo-boo smiles and the rubbly of the door. On the rock bug bark from morn till dark, we died till we on and run. Up down and we struck when a Chinese drunk came up from the torpys zone. She was chubby and square, but we didn't much care, so we barely put to sea. And we left all the crew of the drunk to chew on a bark of the rock bug tree. And though he wins, and though he wins, I hope and I will go. I will stay no more, I'll stay no shore, so let the music play. I'm off on a morning train, I'll cross the raging bay. I'm off to my love with a boxing glove. I'm off to my love with a boxing glove ten thousand miles away.
Everybody's like, "Well, come in, let's go watch it."
Your audience awaits.
Hey, come on, there's some more singing, wait, we got this.
There's more singing?
No, you gotta hear it.
There's a second. There's a second.
You got more of an audience, Brittany.
Yeah. That was fantastic. I loved it. Your voice was lovely. That'd be great.
What's your, what's an interesting portion of this?
Well, obviously, I'm not that girlfriend with kid, and I'll be returning to her, and at this moment in the musical, she realizes that the man she loves won't love her anymore.
(singing) Heaven's touch, eyes meet, sudden silence, I'm here, I sleep again. He could be the boy, but I'm not the girl. Don't dream too far, don't decide who you are. Don't remember the rush of joy. He could be the boy, I'm not the girl. Every so often, we long to steal to the land of one white heaven. But that doesn't solve the ache we feel. And reality sets back with lights flickering, light blim. Shields went on, she wins hair, gold hair with a gentle glow. That's the girl he chose, and the bad news, I'm not that girl. Don't wish, don't start wishing on evil wounds the heart. I wasn't born for the roses. There's a girl I know, he loves her so. I'm not that girl.
So again, that is just a sample, just a taste of, you know, of every day in the choir room, and, you know, I am one of the monkeys people here in the district. I get to work with such great kids and, you know, make memories with them, as well as, you know, I hope that, you know, just, it's very honored why do we?
Before he goes on any.
Can I just add, so this weekend, we had Coral Cabaret, and both Ben and Brittany and Darius and everyone were involved, and it was just fantastic. I had a pilgrimage attending Saturday night, and you guys just look like you're having so much fun, and the music they can belt out, and it is just phenomenal. So we are so blessed as a high school, as a district, to have these students with their ability. I'd also like to acknowledge the moms in the back, because both of these moms have been.
Members of music parents, and always have been supportive, of course, to their children, but to the program, couldn't do without them as well, especially with the musical and the tech week and all that good stuff that goes into it. So know that your time also does not go unnoticed, and you are appreciated, and you matter as well.
Now, before he goes on any more, I just want to reiterate something that I think is obvious but needs to be said, that great things don't happen just because. And one of the reasons that we have seen the type of musical that we can have at our school, and I mean comparative to size wise, we were unbelievable, all the different numbers of people that are in chorus, that are learning about music. That really is because of the leadership, and Mr. Scadella, Sir has done a great job, Mike's done a great job, others done a great job, but when we were fortunate enough to get Mr. Rasserson a few years ago, I think our whole musical group, the people gel together, and I think we're at a whole different level. So thank you, Anthony, for all that you do.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a very fun collaborative experience, definitely, you know, when we came here four years ago to announce, you know, Beauty and the Beast, you know, I did not have, I did not envision.
And no clues.
No clues, no, for yourself aligned, the immense, you know, support and the, you know, we're almost at 900 that come each weekend to the musical as far as attendance, and, you know, for a district that we're also battling the same weekend of FOND and its WLA, and it's really cool to see that response and see that support in this community, in this district. So that goes to show that it's well supported, and it means a lot to the community members as well. I do have some exciting news to share as well. Next year, we are adding a director, not yet, we're adding a director, dramatic director to the bill, so Ms. Klonderman is still going to be in charge of the technical aspects of the lights, soundboard, and, you know, demonstrating that quality and her talents that wise, but we're also happy to announce that Catherine Gilliland will be joining our team as a director.
Oh, my gosh.
Moving forward.
Apparently, she's amazing.
So we've heard, I've had great things, and we're excited to bring that asset to the team, working collaboratively, again, with our fabulous pit director, Mr. Scadella, working with Mr. Madhav and his students as far as getting the set constructed and hopefully getting some art, students involved in painting the set, so it's all, you know, a collaborative process using many different departments. So we are excited to announce our fourth annual Fall Musical. The first weekend, if you, for the drum roll, November 3rd, 4th, and 5th, 2016, 17, rather, we will be performing "Fiddler on the Roof."
And here, it's going to be a good tradition, so it's. You could find inspiration from Mr. Whitaker.
Mr. Whitaker, yes. So we'll have, we'll have.
Do we have any strong male leads that might have an opportunity to play?
I don't know. There's some, there's some very good potentials out there, so we will keep that, we will keep that in mind, so. But yet, when we started, we had just short of 20 students involved. Last year, we had both onstage and in the pit backstage, all the help, we had just about 50 students, so it's been growing. Our show choir, I started with 12, that's at 25. The concert choir, when I started, it was 38 with three guys. We were at 52 with 10 at one point, eight now, but it's, we are moving in the right direction, so it is a bright future ahead at the school district in our Fond du Lac.
"Fiddler on the Roof."
Thank you for having us. Happy to present our musical talents.
Thank you very much.
Looking forward to the future.
Appreciate it, appreciate it. All right.
Thanks.
So I just have one question.
Yes.
Or maybe three.
Okay.
Well, I already know about you. You're a senior, you're departing. Mr. Franklin, are you a senior?
Another year.
You're a junior. Another year.
She's a senior.
All right, so, well, one out of three.
Who's behind us? I mean, I don't.
Oh. Come on.
They're currently too instrumentalist, but I hear they have great voices too, if they want to. No. So I'll let them introduce themselves.
Diego, what did you play?
I played the alto saxophone.
Okay, fantastic, and?
I played alto saxophone for solo ensemble, and then tenor saxophone for jazz band.
And you are Gabby?
Dawn.
Nice.
Great. There you go. It's Ricky.
She's right there. And proud parents, Dawn and Tammy.
Excellent. Thanks again.
All right, pretty nice. Thank you very much.
They never had anything like this here for the record. I'm a little bit jealous that you guys saw this one.
All right, next on the agenda, item number two, future board agenda items?
Yeah, hold on, I'm just tweeting out that the musical's "Fiddler on the Roof."
That's got to be a hashtag something.
Hashtag musical.
And thank you for.
Roof, R-O-O-F.
It'd be a voice call.
All right, thank you.
It just looks roof.
I know, I knew you'd.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you for announcing.
So I guess we'll take a slight wall in the action, since usually it's.
Thank you, guys. Bye, guys. Thanks, Brittany.
And there's a gunky laugh, if anybody wants to.
Thank you. It's really good.
And you can all, and sports, and so it is, you can do multiple things here at the district.
Yeah, just joined band, what, January? Thanks, Anthony.
Thanks again.
Thanks, Anthony.
Just put out, so, yeah, that cool.
That's awesome.
Coral Cabaret, I mean, this is a quiet song for Brittany. I'm trying to remember right now what she's saying, but she just can belt it. I mean, she's phenomenal, and Ben, when Ben first started the stage, when he lights up, he's a different person on the stage, you know, so.
Oh, he was a lion.
Yeah.
Those two blended so well together, there was points where you couldn't tell who was singing what. I was like, huh?
Probably the best role I ever saw Ben play was during the children's theater over the summer, and he was a genie in the land.
Oh, God.
Actually shaved his head for that. Yeah, he was really good at that. Who's this? Ben Franklin.
Really?
Yep. Just throwing out a little more information, I might, there might be something going on at the end of July in my schedule. I don't know how that may be, I just want to kind of keep on the radar and maybe look at either moving that, or if somebody approaches, I'll tell you a little bit more, I don't know for sure, but there could be that fourth. We were having it the second Monday sometimes, but if I can't make it on that fourth, I'll explain later on, I don't want to go on hypotheticals, but there might be a conflict, but I'd have everything set and ready so that it could run even if I wasn't here.
The 24th of July?
Yeah. Because even if we moved it up a week, that's not going to do a whole bunch, and if we had it the second week, I'm going to DC, I'm getting elected to serve on the governing board for three more years, so that's just kind of, that's all, just to give you a heads up, that I think what I'd recommend is we don't change it, and then if there's a conflict with me, and I'll explain more later on, that, then I'd have it all set, then it could just be a whole bunch pretty soon.
Good job, James.
Thank you. That's me, Eric Ruiz from The Forest, Deb Kerr from Brown Deer, and Christine Gilmore from DC Everest. Could be pretty good, man, that'll be cool. I'm the old one there, so I'm the one who gets to all the scheduling. Teaching roles. DC for the governing board, so, in July. All right, so other than that, you guys have any other announcements or anything you need? We're going on a tour tomorrow, schools, four schools.
No, just my air, oh, we've had a little bit of debacle with our diplomas, they tried to throw on one.
Oh, no.
Year two, that they've done this, they're a little annoyed, but they have told me that I will have the diplomas this week, so as soon as I get them and I will get the signatures rolling.
One thing that.
Will everyone be at graduation?
Yeah.
When is it again?
It's the fourth.
July 4th at 1:00 PM.
You're here about 12:30-ish. And then Samantha, and our, we worked really hard for graduation, I mean, not just this past, this last semester, but throughout, you know, 12, 13 years, but there are some students that are struggling. Samantha's done a good job, I know she's stressed and hilt on it, but her, Jenny, and Jill, and the whole high school staff are working on it. I will get you a list that she shares with me so that you know the students who aren't and why, and what's going on, so when you look at the numbers, and if we have, you know, five, 10, you know, 12 right now that are kind of on the bubble, you'll know why. And then our whole idea isn't that we push them through to graduate, it's that they graduate with the right requirements, so I think we've had probably about a 90-plus success rate of anybody who hasn't graduated that graduates within the next year.
It just kills us every year this time of year, you know, because we're like, huh, 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 or, you know, when we've been working with a kid all along, and then parents, and then the parent will act like on the phone, like, really? So we're like, huh. But, yeah, we're trying. I mean, Jenny and Jill are amazing, we emailed all the teachers, remind them, we've got this kid, you know, working on Odyssey, the kids know the due date, it just, yeah.
But our whole mindset is that everybody graduates, but it's, I remember when I was at some schools, it was, well, what can we do to get them through? I don't ask that ever. I mean, if they haven't done it, then you don't walk and suck it up and come back for two weeks afterward, or come back for a summer, and that's okay, because we look at that if they graduate. We want them on time. One thing too that we're really going to dive into, I've talked to Samantha and Adam also, is career college readiness, and that, I think, as we look at that data, it's really shedding a huge, I think, light on things. We can't control ACT tests all the time, we can have an impact a little bit on them, but we can control the efforts of like grade point averages, we can control participation, getting kids volunteer opportunities, we can do a lot more for career and college ready, so as we transition, we're seeing some data that we'll share with the staff about how we can really focus on those things to show how many of our kids are career and college ready. So that's going to be, we'll talk more about it in January, maybe the end of May, but next year, that's all you're going to hear from high school, middle school, because it's the ACTs, which is academic career pathways, it's everything. It's how, so you as a parent will know their kid's career ready if they've got, you know, they've identified a career path, plus they've got two of these other things, or two or more extracurriculars, they have 25 or more volunteer hours, they've enrolled in dual credit certification program. Are they college ready? An algebra II grade, a 2.8. 2.8 is a great point, I think teachers can impact kids, remediation of work, so pretty exciting. So right now, as we look at what's going on, I see a bright future and how we can utilize even homerooms. Samantha and I have been talking, I've got 12 kids, and I'm going to be going on Thursday. Are you in?
I got you covered.
Yeah, so I've got 12 women, they're awesome, but we're looking at how we can develop more of those relationships, and like I just, one of my homeroom kids had a birthday today, so I went and found him and said, "Happy birthday." So how can we make that more, get that connection with kids more and more, so. But I just want to give you a, you know, heads up, you'll get that information, we're coming down the wire, it's exciting. And then we have Wednesday, so a week from Wednesday, we have the presentations, I haven't heard from Mr. Kellogg if he wants to present, but will you be there?
Steven.
Okay. So anybody else want to be there on that Wednesday night? I might, I'm going to try to get back in time, but if not, no, you'll be there, I'll call the on to invite. We'll have like four or five scholarships, three awards.
And we've kind of split our awards night, those parents, those kids that, you know, are more near the edge for the academic awards and things, we were struggling, because we're trying to get it, you know, tight, but it is what it is, so Linda actually sent the invite to those kids for 7 o'clock to come, so that, you know, and they're certainly welcome to come at 6, but, you know, if they don't want to come until 7, then at least it's not as long to sit and wait.
All right, anything else from staff? Staffing's going pretty well, we're still looking for a tech ed, we're going to plan F, now I think, but.
One arm is down?
Well, yeah, and it's, in the long run, it's going to be okay. That was a lot, we'll share later on, but, yeah, we'll work through that. So we're a counselor, we have a school counselor, if you want to talk a little to Carrie and Jill, because they'll be in that.
Love to.
We're going to go to closed, and then I would expect you guys to stick around, and I'll come back, so if you want to talk a little bit about the counselor. I have all of our new staff put in with all the rest of them, so it's just be one motion for all the contracts, but if you want to, we'll talk a little bit about Jackie then too.
So for school counselor, we had a really deep pool of applicants, we had almost 40 people apply, and we did, I did some phone screeners on some initial, and then we ended up bringing in seven candidates to actually interview with us. The lady, the woman we selected to come in and do our counseling for us, her name is Erica Harbach, that's the recommendation, she's coming from the Wapan area school district, and. And one of the things that was really exciting about her when we asked, you know, what was she, what drew her to the North Bonde Lake school district? She and her husband, they don't have children yet. But they purposely chose to, they looked at the entire Fox Valley area. And they actually chose to purchase a home here because of our school system. Because they, this was the school district that they felt they would most like to raise their children in, which was really exciting. So she came in with that mindset, knowing a lot about Happiness Advantage and Sean Aker and the work we're doing around Orange Frog. And we are super excited to have her come on board if her contract is this everybody tonight. So we're looking forward to it.
Then we have Jackie Ikman.
So Jackie interviewed with us, just a fantastic person. She just has a lot of skills. The thing that we loved most about her interview, you know, she did share with us that she is PBS certified for Level 2. And, you know, that fits her right with us. But she talked a lot about that math confidence and the data that she's used, either STAR or her own assessments to really look at kids that, you know, that those kids that come in and say, I'm just not good at math. And there's a lot of research around that, that it's math confidence that you need to instill in these kids. It has nothing to do with their skill level.